The regular meeting of the Hubbardston Planning Board, today's date is July eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Call the meeting to order at six thirty. We have one of our members attending online to make a quorum, Mr. Steiger, and in the room we have myself, and Ms. Dack along with our associate member, Mr. Russell. So I'm gonna take the, well, actually, I'm gonna stay in order for a moment here. So do we have anybody here from the public for comment on anything that is not on the agenda somewhere already? Hearing none, we're gonna move forward to minutes acceptance. The minutes from the last meeting were placed in the drive for all of the members to review and are also available to them in their binder. Also recognizing for attendance tonight, I did receive regrets from Mr. DiMalia and I did not hear from Mr. Holden. So looking at the minutes, and we'll also hold, we'll have discussion after we have a motion on them. Would somebody like to make a motion to accept the minutes?
I'd like to make the motion that we accept the minutes of July the tenth, two thousand and twenty-four, as presented.
All right, hearing a first, do I have a second?
I will second.
All right, hearing a first and a second, corrections and discussion.
It looked very good.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't see anything myself when I looked up. It looked like a fair statement.
Next time I will do a table of appointments instead of the way I did it before. I think the table was probably between making copy and paste to another document if needed.
Yeah.
But that was the only thing afterwards. I was like, oh, darn.
I agree with that.
Okay.
All right, so hearing no corrections or comments, calling vote, and it is a roll call because one of our members necessary for quorum is online. So, Mr. Steiger?
Aye.
Ms. Dack?
Aye.
And the chair is aye, the minutes are accepted. Now, we're gonna go a little bit out of order, so I'm gonna go to matters not reasonably anticipated by chair. So the board is aware that Nate and I had been having discussions with, with some other towns to see if we can find somebody to fill a position for us as a part-time planner, somebody who's a, a person with high-level planning experience to help us bundle up some of the tasks that we need to do in a way where they're more likely to get grant funding or earmark funding, but that we can help get money to pay for those things. Because it's, it's one thing for us to be like, hey, here's a need, but we also need to have a better ability to describe what exactly we're gonna do to fix it, to get those things funded. So this is something I think is gonna be really helpful for us. Nate and I have talked to individuals from a couple towns. We have one person we're working with now who seems to be particularly promising. We can't go into a ton of detail about it because it's not a done deal, noting that that staffing is ultimately the purview of the town administrator and we just have suggestive input on it. We don't actually have any hiring authority as a board, like, not even really dashed authority. So we, we cook the meals with the groceries we get, but Nate is gracious enough to, to at least try to keep us involved in what's going on with it, so. Nate, do you have any additional, additional remarks that's?
Yeah, so as most of you know at this point, I, we had our previous executive assistant leave about three weeks ago. We held a series of interviews for that position and an internal candidate rose to the top. So I ended up hiring Patricia Low, the land use clerk, as our new executive assistant, which is a position that we are transitioning her from sort of slowly but surely while she maintains an interim level of her land use responsibilities at a slightly elevated pay for the time being. I told the select board that it was my hopes to do in sixty days, but if some of these conversations that are evolving with different towns end up coming to fruition, there is a chance that I completely reevaluate how we do things and possibly have her bring planning board with her on an administrative level and hire someone at a little bit lower of a per hour value to handle conservation and doing some minutes and assisting Patricia with some of those things, but that is nowhere near a finalized plan at this time. But I did want to come this evening at the suggestion of the chair to ensure that there will not be a lack of coverage or staff for planning board-related activities as there has been in the past. I have a soft spot for the way you guys were all feeling during the summer of Vertex right before I started, so I really understand the optics of wanting to maintain even at just an interim level and keep you guys updated on what's going to be going on, and I am committed to doing that moving forward. I hope that this sort of incredibly part-time, experienced planner model will end up working out, but if not, I will post the land use clerk in the next few days. But with that, I will answer any questions, but I am happy with the way Patricia's worked both on a land use clerk level and so far in her two days of transitioning over, and am excited to see where we can go from here. The level of interest from my own office in hiring a land use clerk is not based upon the abilities of any one individual or my thought that we can't get another person. Planning is just, there's a lot of red tape and it's not administratively burdensome. It is studious, and you have to really know what you're looking at and what you're looking for, and we were fortunate that Mark came with a certain level of background, and we were fortunate that Patricia came and picked it up quickly and was able to assist to the, to, to a higher level than maybe some others. But I'm kind of nervous that the water's gonna, gonna run out soon and we're not gonna be able to get a candidate with a level of knowledge that we know we need. So we're gonna try to shake it up a bit, but if not, we'll just go back to the way it was. Any questions? All right, perfect, thank you.
Thank you. So as under, also under matters not reasonably anticipated by chair, we got a new invoice from Places Associates. But I believe we actually need to get guidance from the town accountant and the town administrator to know, so that Patricia knows where it's coming out of for us to pay. So I think we'll approve that at our next meeting if that's all right.
We actually have two invoices somewhere.
I have this one for, and then I have the second one, which those AP should have been paid this week, so.
Oh, okay.
That's, we were just, uh.
Was this what we had originally spoken about, spending that additional, uh, five thousand?
Some of it, yeah, some of it comes out of MRPC, but it doesn't use up all of it.
That's the only, that's the only spot we have.
Yeah.
Like, it's either that or.
Yep.
Or stiff the business. Yes, we, we don't even really need to talk, talk to her about that, like, we got approval from her months ago to move forward with that.
Yeah, I just need the approval, so I've got the warrant.
So it's already in everybody's folder?
It's in everybody's folder, in the green section.
All right, so in that case, we have an invoice, invoice number five six six dot zero one from Places Associates, and this is for the time that Places spent working on the, the rural opportunity project. And Places had, had quoted twenty-five hundred dollars for the work and they've come in under budget, so this is the invoice. Somebody like to make a motion, and are there any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the invoice five six 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 point zero one to Places Associates for two thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars.
All right, hearing a first, do we have a second?
I second that motion right now, yes.
All right, we have a second from Mr. Steiger online. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
So I'm trying to, I apologize, go ahead.
So for the good of the order, the funding that I spoke about sort of veiledly a moment ago is repurposed special article master plan money from a few years ago that was originally going to be utilized to finish the master plan, utilizing MRPC. But at that time, which let's call it a year and some change ago, the master plan was obviously not finished, still is not finished, but there was such a level of work that we had a agreement that we just weren't going to owe them for the money. It got to a point where we had agreed on it and then they sent us an invoice. I sent them back a one-sentence reply and never heard again. So after that, the chair and I went and spoke with our town accountant about ways that we could repurpose this, and she at the time, again approximately a year ago, noted that it could be used for other planning board projects, such as the agricultural overlay district project. Not that.
All right, Mr. Steiger, did you still have a question?
No, no, I think it was answered.
All right, excellent. Any further questions about the invoice? All right, calling a vote, and it's a roll call because we have an online member for quorum, Mr. Steiger?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Dack?
Aye.
And the chair is aye, the, the invoice is approved, and there was another one, or?
No, that other one was paid this week with AP. I was told I would double check. It was a little, it was a little, uh, hey, uh.
I know what's, we actually know.
The, for, for our tax factor is on vacation this week.
Okay. All right, so let's, um, let's continue out of order, um, a bit, and let's go to the, the issue tracker and have a discussion about that and some of the strategic goals that are in there. So this is, this is particularly important, given the conversation that we had had earlier about trying to get somebody up to speed on what's important for us and what we think are projects that are important. I mean, a big part of having somebody who's an experienced planner come in is so they can tell us about us with a fresh perspective, but it's also good to have something that we can hand to them in a relatively concise way and be like, hey, based upon what we've been kicking around for the last few years, these are the projects that are currently important for the planning. So I wanted to, to kind of run down this list and see if anybody, we don't have to read the list into the record, we can look at individual sections, and see if anybody has anything that they would, that they would really like to see get added to it, that they would really like to see come out of it, um, so on and so forth. So with that said, I would like to open the discussion.
Mr. Chair, from a pillars of municipal government standpoint, this doesn't exactly matter because of how the planning board is formed, but at the recent select board goal retreat meeting, it was stated by one of the members in a very similar way to that of the chair, for no reason at all, that there was a priority to be set on figuring out what to do with zoning and establishing zoning that would be economic development friendly, because a lot of times municipalities will say, oh, what can we do for economic development? What can we do to support our businesses? And with the current tools that the town has available, we cannot do much, because we are just not in a space to do so. So it will come out on the goals for the select board that have not yet been presented or approved, that a zoning review and recodification of the zoning bylaws is going to be prioritized in the next year to two years, hopefully grant-funded.
Yeah, and the, the recodification, I think, is, e- even if it's not a full recodification, there's some stuff that we really just have to kind of move towards modern standards on, like our, our schedule of uses, and I use the term schedule of uses a little loosely. The modern standard, standard of doing that is having a table of uses, and that way, that when you wanna go through and you wanna make some kind of small change, you don't have to rewrite the bylaws in a whole bunch of sections. We also have sections that conflict with each other. We have some problems that were also created by some of the attorney general redlining, so it, add on to what Nate's saying, even if it's not a full recodification, at a, at a minimum, we have to move towards a modern, my opinion on this is we have to move towards a more modern approach to how we outline our uses, instead of having just this long narrative with the pyramidal zoning scheme, because, oh, in a lot of places, it doesn't make sense. And also, when you just look at our map and you see the little, the little tiny baby hurricane and its projected track in the giant field of green, there's clearly a lot more thoughtfulness that could go into some of the individual areas of the town and what types of uses are, are better suited for them. So I, I think there's a lot of opportunity there. I don't know, what, what other members think about that, where it should fall on the long-term project list?
Right at the top.
I agree with the chair's recommendation.
To that, I would like to also add, if I may, we do know and understand that there are actually commercial slash industrial sites that are not necessarily within the zones that are marked as, exclusively marked as, 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 as commercial and then residential. I think we really need to get an inventory of the locations where that happens and then evaluate whether or not these are places that, but as I said, how do we handle those? The reason is, is that these are, these are establishments that have been there for a longer period of time, and I doubt very much these are ever gonna be reverting back to residential areas. Again, I, I know for, from my visiting the various different places that we have in town that this, this stuff definitely does exist in, in multiple locations.
Yeah, there's, I mean, there's some pretty good examples of that, like Hubbardston Crossing. Like, that's kind of a unique little area with the way it's right on the rail, there's a rail yard there, and.
Absolutely.
It's been a longstanding commercial use and.
Yeah.
How much appetite is there to take that area and, um, put houses as close to the rail line as possible in an area that would be fairly open? So, yeah, there's, and, and that's just one of many examples where kind of the, the reality in the physical world doesn't match the reality in the, the zoning regulations.
Correct, and, but I think it is important for us to also understand, wh- what do we, what do we know exists out there? Make sure that we have a complete inventory of that, that that inventory be one that be presented to the planning board so that we can address each one of those individually.
Yeah.
Or collectively.
Can you define what you mean by address?
Address means is, is that right now, they're not even part of a, well, let me put it this way, they, they are commercial zones, this is, these are commercial, commercial air, uh, enterprises, and they are not, they're not located in a commercial zone. And so the question now would be is, is what, what, what does that mean? Do we have to review our, our maps? Do we have to create, uh, new, new areas and, and physical zones and recognize that these places do exist?
All right, I like it.
Yeah, I, I think that makes sense, and I, looking around at what other small towns have done over the years, like, they, they have more than three zoning classifications. Like, they'll, they'll often be some mixed use, some village zoning, some stuff like that, like, that's, that's the place where people have gone in the last twenty years. And there's certainly some places in town that are probably good for that kind of flexibility, like some of the sand pit properties, um, where, where those are really areas that kind of call for, um, call for things other than how they're currently zoned, so.
Mr. Chair, in addition, without going too far into what has now become a thinly veiled secret, there is going to be likely, as long as things continue moving down the path they are currently on, a proposal coming, coming down the pike in the next week or so. A part of this proposal will be future zoning improvements, and that will be one of the main factors of some of the sale of this project if we do end up going that route. So keep an eye out for that, but that's something we're gonna have to kind of keep our finger on the pulse of as well.
Yeah.
So it, I believe it appears on the list already, but we talked about it a bunch previously. I think we need to make sure it stays on the list, wireless bylaw, um, because ours is pretty out of compliance with the TCA and the Spectrum Act, and we're currently in a place where every time someone comes in with an application, because we're so wildly out of compliance, they can just be like, you're wildly out of compliance TCA. If we had a more reasonable, more thoughtful, um, wireless bylaw, we could have more control over some of those applications when they come in, instead of them all coming in and starting out on a litigation footing. Because like our, our co-location requirements, um, they're just not applicable, like, unless somebody was making a major modification to the footprint of the tower, our requirements just aren't applicable, so. Um, I think, uh, I, well, what are some other thoughts that people have before we look at the DLTA projects, because I think blending these two lists is ultimately where we need to end up. I mean, not that what we've already talked about is super easy and will be really quick, so we need to add more stuff, but just to get it out there.
I think we can work with what we have here, and I think this already is a fairly, there's a lot of work here.
Yeah, there certainly is, and I, I know it goes into what we've talked about already in terms of the recodification and looking at the overall zoning, but the two members who aren't present tonight at previous meetings have also expressed a desire to expand the commercial zone as, as is practical, using whatever research is, so I think that's included in what we, we talked about. All right, so there's another document, which is the list of DLTA projects, and these are projects that we've gone out and attempted to ask for money for, either as a direct local technical assistance, uh, project. So direct, for the benefit of the public, direct technical local assistance are grants that are given out by our regional planning agency that are also serviced by our regional planning agency. So they give out the grant and then they do the work under the grant, and it's supposed to be to help towns out with, um, with, with discreet technical projects, something where you can have like a project engagement and hopefully have it start and end in a way that's relatively time-bound. So that's where, where that comes from, and these are, these are a list of projects that we've, that we previously agreed on as a board. I believe most of this is all still valid, just for the benefit of the public who doesn't have this in front of them. The projects that we've previously tried to get funding on are update, modernize, special permanent site plan process, included in what we were talking about, the recodification. Large-scale solar, multi-ic revision. We did actually get a, get a grant on this a little while ago, and we did make some changes, but it's still an open area of discussion. Revise, update subdivision rules, this is something that's been recommended to us a bunch by our previous land clerk and by our consultant. Revise, update, modernize marijuana bylaw. Yeah, we, we have the benefit of gotten a lot, getting to learn, um, how that actually works in practice, whereas the people who wrote it, they pleaded, they just did the best they could at the time they could. So revise, update, modernize wireless communication bylaw, uh, talked about that already. Review and revise zoning for commercial uses, review and revise uses for all zones, battery energy storage bylaw. So we actually have a group of volunteers from the public, one of them being our former land use clerk, who have committed to pulling together a team to write a proposal for that to subsequently submit to us, so we won't worry about that for the moment. And then review of our aquifer protection bylaw. And that's partially related to the subdivision rules, but, um, but that's the list that's there, so I don't know if anybody has anything that, that, that they would like to change as our list of priorities there, or anything that they don't think makes sense anymore or that we need to add.
All right, I think this, this list looks very, it, it's quite, it's quite, it's quite a lot of things here.
So I'll, if nobody else has any comment, I'll do what I can to consolidate these with Patricia and Nate so that we can have one concise document instead of having it currently be split between two documents, so. All right, any, no other discussion on that?
We may want to also take what we submitted, the four different projects that went in from a developmental standpoint to the community one-stop, and ensure that they are added to this list as well.
Yeah, because there is some overlap there.
Almost entirely, like, there's one project that's maybe not.
And that's just Ice Street on Street, so.
All right, sounds good. All right, so moving along the list, we're actually going back up to old business, um.
Do you want me to check my email really quick so I can see if you shot me an email?
Yeah, can, can you check your, I know he sent, looking for the.
And I sent it to him last night.
And I saw that he sent it. I mean, we're not accepting new evidence, so we don't actually need him to proceed, I don't believe.
The applicant?
Yeah.
Oh, no, you don't. You were continued to a time, date was certain.
Yeah.
Yes, he did, I was on, on the email chain where he asked for the link to tonight's meeting.
Yeah, and he did, he did comment on the special permit that it was generally acceptable to him. Yeah, if we can't get all of them, I'm fine, just talking about that on the record and keeping this moving, because we're pretty much having this meeting just for this.
But he does need to get in on his vote.
He does.
Nothing.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Let's take a five-minute recess and see if we can get him on the phone. So let's come back at seven oh five, I think we'll be pretty quick after that, so we're taking a five-minute recess until seven oh five.
Okay.
I'm gonna take this opportunity to hit the rug, so it was nice to see all of you. So you'll get an email tomorrow, I'll try and assess it.
Do you have a sound on the phone?
Correct.
Thank you, Nate.
I do have a sound number for him, I just have his business number and he never answers that. Which is not the best.
Which is not the best.
It's not on the application.
It's that, the number that is listed there is his business number that he lets go to voicemail and then he calls you back maybe sometimes.
I bet you that's a soft phone.
That's what I'm thinking, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that's definitely gonna be a Google number that he screens to his cell phone.
Yep. It's been a long day.
How's the corner office?
Great, great, it's uh, it's, it's going.
I bet it's busier around here, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's right. Um. No, it's it's different cause like I had my whole desktop set up in the land use office exactly, like extremely efficient. And they brought over my monitor, but they didn't bring over the hard drive with it.
Oh.
So they gave me to do a monitor over there, so now it's like resetting everything and my Google Drive doesn't wanna open to Word, it wants to open to Google Docs, but I hate Google Docs and.
I hear ya.
And the town website doesn't like Google Docs, so you have to copy and paste into Word and then save it as a PDF onto the desktop and move it over to.
Always an extra step, right?
Like it's free for no good reason.
Yeah.
So I uh, was working from home last night, do minutes and stuff like that. Finally called tech support, uh, AKA my two best friends, and I was like, can you? They're like, we're going in the back door through your, like, we're we're coming, we're gonna fix this.
It's pretty cool the way they can do that.
Yeah, also it just makes me feel a little unsettled that they can just walk into the back of my computer and just mess the stuff.
No, no, you have to say okay.
Yeah, I was like, I don't like it.
All right, so calling back to order, the uh, the regular meeting of the Hubbard Stent Planning Board. Uh, so we have a, an item on our agenda here, uh, which is um, deliberation and vote on um, on the draft special permit for sixty-nine Gardner Road Royal Sun LLC. Now, we had held a uh, a public hearing on this and at the hearing testimony was delivered by the applicant uh, and by our consultant. We did not receive any testimony from the public uh, in writing or at the meeting. We closed the public hearing, so we can no longer accept new testimony on this application. The applicant was here at our previous meeting, uh, but because of a quorum issue, we could not um, we could not have deliberation or hold a vote on it. Uh, the applicant is not present tonight, although the applicant had confirmed by email that he was planning on attending. Since we're not introducing new information or new testimony on this, I don't think we actually need the applicant here to proceed. Because by rule, we can't accept new testimony anyways. So essentially what's on the table is what's on the table and even if the applicant was sitting right here, that wouldn't make a difference on it. So um, I'm gonna open up discussion in the board in a moment. I did wanna say that the difference between the version that everybody has in their folder and the live version uh, is the dates have been updated to reflect today's date instead of the date of our previous meeting.
Double checks.
Um, so with with that said, from a procedural standpoint, does anybody have uh, oh, I guess also from a procedural standpoint, because we um, we have two members that did not attend the public hearing, have not filed Mullins affidavits and they're not here tonight, they're obviously not eligible to vote. So a special permit requires a super majority vote, so it would be a unanimous vote by the board in order to um, approve the application and approve the special permit tonight. Uh, anything else would be a fail. We also, um, the special permit had previously expired and because of all the things that have been going on, we had granted an administrative extension. So if we weren't to take action on this tonight, uh, we would need to do another administrative extension uh, anyways. So I believe that's a full summary of what's gone on with this. Uh, Mr. Murray, do you have anything to add to that?
I have revisions for you.
Okay.
Sorry. I I did them while I was sitting here.
I went through this special permit, why do I lie? What did I do this?
May I?
Yeah, please uh.
Of course, come join the table, sir.
Yes.
I'm I'm going in your direction.
Come in my direction.
Before we get to the revisions, because this has to be uh, a unanimous vote, does anybody have any uh, any issues with continuing to proceed?
I don't.
I don't.
Mr. Steiger, do you have any issues with proceeding? Okay, so we'll proceed, uh, what's the the revisions?
So page.
Three out of fourteen.
I added a five point four and modified five point three because on July tenth, you continued the public hearing and our original document said you were taking the vote last week, which you did not do. So now that one simply gets revised to say that it was continued. Uh, and I added at the end of the sentence at the request of the applicant.
Okay.
And then I add the five point four, which duplicates what five point three says, but with today's date. And presumably you're gonna vote to approve.
Does, does anybody see that as a substantive change or have any issues with it?
Yeah, these are all pretty administrative clarifications and claims.
Yep.
No, no.
I would definitely take a copy of it, but the way we're talking about it, it's part of the record, so we don't wanna shoot it through the machine. Oh, and while while we're going through, we're talking about some of these changes, I presume that there's somebody on the board that would like to suggest that administratively we waive the reading of the entire special permit into the record. Is there?
That is my recommendation, yes.
Excellent, thank you. As we've already read this into the record in the past, so. It's the very last.
Yeah.
That was it.
Yes, I already got it.
So the signature page is good.
So uh, just to recap for the public, so we had two administrative changes to the document. There was uh, the history of the hearings that we've had, we've updated it to reflect what's actually happened. And then what was it on the signature page that was?
Oh, on his signature page, it said the tenth, on our signature page, when I updated it this afternoon, it says the eighteenth.
Okay, so the date on the signature page has also been updated.
List of.
All right, so with uh, with those um, non-substantive changes, is there anything that anybody would like to talk about or debate with uh, with this permit that's on the table? Okay, so recognizing that our associate member is voting.
The window.
That our associate member is voting and is also necessary to have a unanimous vote for this. Are we ready for someone to make a motion to approve the site plan and special permit application of Royal Sun Farm LLC for sixty-nine Gardner Road, including um, the specific findings outlined in section seven, along with the conditions that are, the general conditions that are also outlined and the special conditions that are also outlined therein.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to sub move that we uh, sub move, let's put it this way.
All right, so hearing first, do I have a second?
I have a second.
All right, uh, calling for deliberation. So I would, I'd like to thank Mr. Murray for for his work on this, regardless of how the vote goes, because there's a lot of work that goes into dealing with these applicants and particularly this applicant. So I very much appreciate the work from Mr. Murray and from Patricia on um, on uh, keeping this applicant moving through the process. Because there's definitely been some work and I know I I did some of that work too, so I very much have appreciation of what you guys went through. So I wanted to publicly thank you guys. The, uh, my my thinking on this is the applicant submitted essentially the same application before us that he did previously with no real substantial changes and uh, the law of Hubbard Stent has not changed since we granted it the first time. And uh, in in my um, in my assessment, although there were some odor complaints, those have since been addressed because we now have a pretty long history of time since we received the last odor complaint. And uh, Mr. Schmidt in particular did an excellent job presenting to the board on the night when we were asking for mitigation plans. He was receptive. He, he uh, came up with suggested changes and suggested things that they were gonna be different in the future and a lot of those things they were already planning on doing differently in the future. But his approach to working with us was really great, so I I don't um, I don't see that as something to look back on and see as um, being more impactful than was intended by the application or our original decision or the towns' underlying bylaw. So that's, that's roughly where where I'm at with this. I don't know if anybody else has anything that they would like to add to the discussion. All right, so in that case, I'm calling a vote and it is a roll call vote because we have a member participating online. So uh, Mr. Steiger?
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Dak?
Aye.
And Mr. Russell?
Aye.
And the chair is aye. The uh, the special permit as revised with the dates. Special permit, site plan, uh, and uh, conditions as included within the permit are approved.
Quick question.
Yep.
Did Mr. Steiger's motion state to approve? Or he moved the motion, but I didn't, I'm not sure I heard the motion to approve the special permit.
My motion, I I had suggested if somebody would like to uh, submit a motion to approve the site plan and special permit application along with the site plan and special permit for sixty-nine Gardner.
So, got it.
Okay. Yep.
And and that, and that is how I heard it and that was my sub moved.
Excellent, well, thank you, thank you all for hanging in on this one because you know, we're all volunteers, it's a lot of work and there's a lot to go through on these in order to work together and I appreciate the amount of just sheer reading that that goes into these.
Do you wanna pass down for the members who are here, Francois, can you come in next week to sign this for me?
I'll make arrangements to meet up with you and sign it, yes.
Perfect, thank you.
We can also do that after adjournment, so let's um, we don't have anything else on the agenda for tonight other than uh, another call for public comments and comments from the board.
One last thing.
And comments from staff.
Sorry. Uh, the MRPC annual bill has to go on the very first warrant, I would just need a motion to to pay it, I guess. Usually those just pay themselves, but this time we got a paper invoice and they want us to do it this way, so I'm doing it this way.
Okay, do you have the numbers for that?
Uh, none on top of my, this is all I got from Mary, so, um, little post-it note. What account needs to be paid out of, it comes out of the same account every year.
We need the number to be able to vote on it.
Okay, perfect, so it'll be on the next agenda for the next meeting. Okay, perfect, so it'll be on the next agenda for the next meeting. Sorry, guys.
And just for the benefit of the public following along, MRPC is our regional planning agency. Alright, so with that said, any additional comment from members of the board or members of the public? I think this is the first time you've come to one of our meetings and not commented on something.
Maybe.
I'll take that as a comment that we're all doing a phenomenal job. Alright, so with that said, would somebody like to make a motion?
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Here in a first, do we have a second?
I second that motion.
Non-debatable, calling a vote, Mr. Steiger?
Aye.
Ms. Dack?
Aye.
And the chair is aye, we are adjourned. Uh, please hang around and.